Okay, it's seven o'clock. So let's call this meeting of the Silver Falls School District Work Session Order. Debbie, you're the one attending. And Ron sent a text, he's gonna be here. He's not here right now, but he's gonna be here about fifteen minutes. So he's on his way. So this is our first meeting out in the rural school areas. And glad we're doing this. So first topic on the agenda is the Audience With Viz. Does anybody, anyone like to address the board? Nobody wants to be first, huh?
Very good.
Okay.
It's nice to have you out here.
Yeah, well, thanks. Yeah, so yeah, I mean, great. Certainly, certainly nobody has to, but you can get us back to the meeting or something. Okay, very good. We'll move on to our discussion items. I guess the first item is the use of our new Board Book, which is a way of getting our Board packets out to the Board members and also it's a way for the public to get a hold of them too. Is that, can I summarize that?
Yes, would you like me to run with that? And I'm actually gonna ask Debbie to do a demonstration on the computer. I'll share a few words if you wanna go there. It's a little awkward, sorry about that. The screen is behind you, behind y'all. So, but I, this might be as much for the public as it will be for you. Maybe more for the public because each one of you should have received by now your access information, username and access information. Otherwise, the public will be able to see this as a link directly from the school district website. We anticipate by tomorrow, again, assuming there are no glitches tonight and no further input by you that would cause any kind of a delay. But we really want to get this role down to the public as quickly as possible. So for the sake of the public, Board Book is an electronic means of distributing agenda, items, Board Packet Information Attachments, active links that the Board would be considering, information that would be otherwise considered in the agenda. So we really think it's a great addition to Silver Falls School District and one that I think will be well received. The other benefit to you as a Board is that it will eliminate the need for mailing your packets, which is something as Jennifer just shared prior to the meeting today. She received her packet in the mail today. It was mailed last Tuesday. And so there's really, we've seen time and time again, not a lot of real predictability with the US Postal Service to be able to get that information to you in a timely fashion, even though we even moved it up a day a few years ago. So this, I believe, will help. And we'll get the information out actively to the Board by at least the Wednesday prior, to the public, at least the Wednesday prior, which will be, in some cases, days ahead of when you would have been by the rest received it. So Debbie, why don't we, have you go ahead and show the public view? If you wanna go ahead and type in your...
Okay. And you all, you should have received yours tonight. This will be what you, when you open up your Board Book, you'll have your login. So... And I have a different view, so I'm gonna go to... Nope. There we go. So as we, and as we have meetings, they'll start to stack up. So you could pick if you wanna go back to another meeting. So this is the only one that we've pushed. So I'm gonna click on it. And here's your Agenda Packet. It's very straightforward. And there's your Agenda. So what you have is your Call Meeting To Order. It looks just like what we have here. And then accept that your attachments are here. Public Comment will always be here. This is something that would normally sit on the back table here. So we've just included it in the Agenda. And here's your Homeless Piece. It's sitting here on the table as well, but it's kinda one-stop shopping. I don't, so we just, you just keep going on and on. And this is, once the public opens up the link, this is what they will see once they open up the meeting. So it's very, very straightforward and... Any, nothing too difficult there.
By the benefit of the public, you'll be able to use your smartphone or tablet to be able to see the same thing that essentially the Board members are seeing. The Board members will receive, as they do now, an administrative memo prior to every meeting that helps explain some things and gives them some information that may be based upon information that they've received in the past. In some cases, that information would be otherwise considered confidential or protected, so that's why the public wouldn't generally see that information. That would be, really be the only difference. And I will share with you as well is that what it looks like at the Board Meeting will remain the same. We'll still have paper copies here. And what I'd like is some input from the Board, though. I know Debbie would as well, about what it should look like at Board Meetings. We are fully prepared and I think it would be really the right thing to do, at least for a little while, to have paper packets ready for you at the Board Meetings as we transition into Board Book, as we move ahead. In other words, you would arrive, you would have received your electronic agendas, but when you arrive here, we're prepared to put the full paper packet in front of you when you are at the meeting itself. We just think there is now no need to send that in the mail to you because you'll be receiving the same information electronically. So we'd appreciate any feedback on that. The other option would be all of you relying upon your own tablets, your own smartphones to be able to track everything at the Board Meeting itself. I don't know that you're ready to take that meeting, but if you are, we're fully prepared to do that too. So would you like us to continue with paper packets prepared for you in each of your stations for each Board Meeting?
I would.
I would. I like the size of it better. Trying to read, you know, maybe it's my old eyes, but older eyes, but I'm getting the, you know, reading out off of, falling along on my phone is comfortable. But I maybe, I can see myself printing them out at home. I can just have my packet there. Maybe over time, we won't be, maybe have a packet for somebody who forgot something.
Sure.
But yeah, for now, I'd say, I'd say leave them.
So we'll have seven packets ready. And then we'll have all the regular paper copies for the public that we all always do. So that will remain the same.
And for the public as well, if they wanted to print theirs out at home, there's the tablet on the top. It's a user-friendly version, so it's pretty simple, so...
If there's confidential information, will it be on our...
It'll be when you log in, yes.
Okay.
The public will, on our website, there'll just be a link. You click on it and it opens up. And then you just kinda, you see your different meetings. And that's when you click on it. So there's, there's the, there's a board. Like if there's something confidential, that would be released only to you.
So do we, when we log in, do we go to the public view? Or does it, it comes up to this?
It'll just default, it'll default to your view.
Okay.
So just to be clear for the public that's sitting here, the steps that they need to take. They go to the district website?
Yes.
Okay? And then, so silverfallschools.org, correct? And then on that page, what will they find? Do they need to look for quick links or where do they go?
That's what we're gonna, we'll figure that out tomorrow. We didn't wanna put it on the website until we got a, you know, got a thumbs up and this is what we want.
Yeah.
It will be very, it'll be very intuitive.
Intuitive. Okay.
Yeah. And it's just, it'll just click it. I've gone on other school districts, I've clicked it and blah.
It's right there.
It's right there.
I've done it too, but I just wanted to make sure that the public knows, you know, you go to the website and then...
Yeah, it's still our website.
Oh, yes, still our website. So they're not going to boardbooks.com or anything like that. So that's one thing I wanted to make clear for the public, you know, as we transition into this and they can get used to the habit of doing that and getting information almost in real time, to a certain degree. Yeah, okay. Great, thank you.
Debbie, Eddie. I appreciate the work that you've put in to prepare for this. I know it's been a process.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Especially thank you to Debbie, she really supported us.
Oh, one last question and for the public. Is there an app that they can download from the App Store for this and they can do it on their phone?
Just for the iPad.
Just for the iPad.
You can still access it off of your smartphones, your home, your computers, but the app is for your iPad.
Okay, so...
Specifically.
That makes a difference. Okay, perfect.
But it's still, yeah, I just put a link on my computer at work and just pop it in.
Perfect, okay. Just so people know that, you know, they have that option and to do that too. So, yeah, great. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Any questions? Well, there you go. It's great. Yeah, all right. Thank you. Thanks, Debbie. Okay, next on the agenda, discussion item is a District Homeless Student Report and District Intervention Presenter, Mark Henne.
So this portion of the evening will be a little redundant next month because my actual Board Report is next month. So I have a little bit of this to talk about then and maybe some updated numbers updated as in another month from now. I, I, there were two things that I provided for you tonight. One was a news release from ODE. And you'll note, obviously, the headline is "Homeless Student Count Reaches All-Time High." I think the important part there is what represents the K-12 population is about just a hair under 4% of the population. And we run about half that in this district. And the numbers in Silver Falls have remained pretty flat. We're down a little bit from, you'll note on the back of that page, from 1516, we had 93 students. Last year, 73. And we're 56 students to date. And I checked last year and that's one less than we were last year. So if these numbers hold true, we'll probably be somewhere around where we were last year. And like I said, that's 4% roughly of our population. Couple of things that I did wanna make you aware of is, and I can't remember if I shared this with you. I'm sitting on, ironically, their meeting tonight at the Community Center, a Town Homeless Task Committee that was put together by Mayor Palmer. And I shared this exact same information with them to give to the group tonight. This will be the third time that the group has met. Couple of things. Once a student is identified as homeless, they're identified homeless for the entire school year, regardless of whether their living situation changes. So some of the things that a homeless student can receive is free lunch, reduced fees, things of that nature. And they would receive that throughout the school year. Probably the most important thing to note, though, is we only count students for Silver Falls where Silver Falls District is the school of origin. So if you'll note, for example, a student that becomes homeless as they reside in Silver Falls and then move to Salem, we would count that student because we're the school of origin. If a student becomes homeless in Salem Kaiser and moves to Silverton, we don't count those students. That would be counted by Salem Kaiser. So the numbers of students you see there began the school year as Salem Kaiser's, or as Silver Falls students. Questions about how we count our kids?
Why, why is it that way?
Why is it school of origin?
Yeah.
Well, part of it is based on who's responsible. So for example, a student in Silver Falls School District that begins in Silver Falls, moves to Salem, we are responsible for transporting them back to their school of origin. Now, what we typically do is we split that cost between the two school districts. So we pay them to get here, Salem Kaiser would pay them to get back. So it's, it's basically split up that way so you know who's responsible for the resources.
And the reason, if a kid, if a kid starts to soar and transfers to Salem or moves to Salem, we keep, we give them the option to stay in school here so they maintain that continuity?
Most students choose to do that, at least from our district. And we encourage them to because when I was principal at the high school, I always told kids, this is the best place you're gonna go to school. So we want you to remain here. So we would do everything we could to transport them back. Now, the mitigating factor is if they become homeless in Silver Falls and they move to Pendleton, they're gonna be going to school in Pendleton.
Yes. So why are they considered homeless all year? So I'm thinking, you know, if you have a kid that's maybe living with extended relatives or whatever, is homeless, considered homeless in Silverton. And, you know, maybe things turn around and the family moves to Salem, why are they still considered homeless if they have a home?
It's the law. McKinney-Vento Act is the law that we are bound by for our homeless student rules and laws. And it's, we're bound by that law.
Mark, the 56 that we have, what ages? Do you know what ages is on?
It's K-12.
I mean, but...
I don't have...
Is it spread, oh, you don't have that?
I don't have that broken down. I can get that for you.
I was just curious if it's spread over K-12 or if it's more high school kids or...
You know, it's, it's, that's a great question. And it's all over the map because it's, it's family-based. So you could have a student, you could have a middle school student and siblings that are elementary school and they're all counted.
Okay.
Other questions? Appreciate you coming up on the hill. It's not that far, folks, not very far. It's just not that far.
Nice drive.
Yeah. You should see it in the daytime. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, next item. Oregon High School Clay Target League Proposal for Severton High School. Kamara Palmer and Jay Dries. Do you guys want us to come down there? Would it be all right to just sit up here?
Oh, we've got the camera here, so it'd be better if you guys could.
Maybe if we came down, right. We've got other, other folks.
Oh, you guys can sit up here too.
Yeah, but... All right. We've got your packets. I know you haven't had a lot of time to look at those. And it's a lot of information. So I'm gonna try to whittle it down. And then we know that you're gonna have questions. And I would like to, we're now with Jackie Zerbrug. She was Jackie's Severton High School parent. And she kinda started this ball rolling with an email, kinda looking for the team to start. And then we have the Phillips family in this corner. Cameron is a junior at the high school and his parents, Carla and Jamie. And Cameron took part, he participated with the Malala Clay Target Team last year. So they are our aces in the hole up here. And they're gonna, guys, I would like you all to just bust in, okay? If you have something to say, check me up on our accuracy here as well. But I wanna start off with two things. Clay Target League is the fastest-growing high school sport. And it's the safest high school sport there is. With that, to show that, not one injury in 15 years. So those are significant details, I think, to keep in mind. The website, I cannot do their website justice. The Oregon State High School Clay Target League. So we're gonna refer back to it frequently. It is a well-put-together, very informative, super-organized source of information. James and I have been involved with the emails, telephone calls with Dale Nelson, who's the state coordinator. I spoke today with Chuck from the Candy Rotten Gun Club, where we are pre-approved pending Board Approval and Formation of the Team to do the shooting of the Candy Club. Candy, yeah, Candy Rotten Gun. Some statistics from last year. 20,109 athletes took part across the country. 615 teams in 15 states. So this is growing like crazy. If you look at the yearly growth, it's huge. It doubles, it doubles, it doubles and goes right up to where there's just an awful lot of kids and teams taking part. In our area, Candy High School, Wilsonville, Malala and Central High School in Independence all have teams. So the groundwork for this has been laid. All of the heavy lifting has been done ahead of time. And you'll see that as we go through. This is a nine, nine-week spring league. It's open to boys and girls, grades six through 12. We're going to focus on nine through 12 at this point. That's our goal. Registration deadline is March 1st. Up at the top of your handout, we believe that there is plenty of time to be able to get a team up and going by the March 1st deadline for team registration. And James Rize, our high school athletic director, has been gathering names of interested students. And that's up to...
Yeah, we have, there's been 28 boys and girls, both, that have actually come into my office to express an interest. Basically, what I've shared with them is that we have a meeting tonight to share with the Board our thoughts and plans. I can tell you outside of the 28 names that I have, they say, "Oh, and my buddy, and, oh, and I know..." And I said, "Well, they have to come in and talk." So we have 28 that have actually came into my office to say, "Put my name down on that list." So I think that that, that speaks to the, to the interest. I can also tell you, it was in our daily announcements for two, for two weeks. So in terms of how much we've really put out there to recruit, hasn't been a ton. But I think we can maybe speak to Jackie and Cameron a little bit about things that they've heard or thoughts or...
Thank you. Well, this is my son, Jay. He'd like to participate. And I think it's, like you said, two weeks. They've got a shortlist right now, but I'm pretty sure, I think, my understanding was when Malala put out their first meeting, 100 kids showed up when they began. So I'm assuming it would be similar to that.
Yeah, so I was an assistant coach with the Malala trap team, as Jackie said. Our first, our first meeting at the school, we did, we had over 100 kids show up. We ended up with 32 kids register and 27 participate for the whole season. So the, you know, we've got a budget that, like Kevin said, the awesome thing is we've got this wealth of information. All these other teams went in blind. So Silverton is benefiting from all this knowledge that they have in terms of what's the actual cost gonna be to students? What are the actual time commitments gonna be for families? And what are the requirements on the coaching side to make this a reality? All that work is already done. I mean, this is, we're not flying blind on anything. We're not recreating or creating the wheel for the first time or so.
And from what I've been able to learn, sort of, this is one tightly-run ship all the way around, whether at school level and especially at the gun club. Safety is first, bar none. I'd say all their documents, talking to the phone, the guy on the phone, it's all about safety. Competitions are virtual, so that this, it's not like Silverton travels and meets up with the Candy Team and they, you know, they go at it head-to-head, which doesn't sound real good. So the only in-person competition would be the state tournament in June. So you go and you compete on, you know, you go up to about, guys, I'm seeing about one to two days a week is all the literature. Is that like up to two days?
Yeah, so what we'll, the way, it depends on the number of kids that sign up. So again, with Malala, we had 27 kids. We use the Candy Club and we use Candy primarily, one is convenient for Malala. I would still wanna look at Candy as the primary location only because they have the best range safety operation. Some of these other gun clubs, like Mid Valley Clays is a, is a good gun club, but they're set up for, they're not set up with range safety operations like Candy is. So two days a week, what we did, Candy Gun Club is open Tuesdays and Thursdays to the public. And so what we, the league requires us to designate the, at least one day, but preferably two days in a week, where the team will shoot together. If a student can't attend one of those two days, then they can't compete for that week, right? Because there has to be safety officers on site for them to shoot. You can't just, you know, head out to the gun club and shoot on your own. There has to be safety operations in place. So we did Tuesdays and Thursdays as our designated days. And we would typically use Tuesday as our makeup day slash practice day. It was optional if you wanted to come. Thursdays were competition days. And you would shoot 50 targets on Thursdays.
Jamie, can you speak about the, I believe you told me it was the two weeks leading up to the season? Can you talk about that a little?
Yeah, so the Candy Gun Club, again, they've, they've got such an awesome operation. They do a spring league. And in the spring, in March, before the Oregon High School Clay Target League starts, they do a juniors' spring league. And they actually have an NRA-certified range safety officer, Ralph. I can't remember Ralph's last name. He puts the fear, the right fear in the kids on gun safety. He makes them aware, this is not a toy. This isn't, you don't come here to play. If you came here to play, I'm gonna ask you to leave. And he does. He asks, he'll tell the kids you need to leave. And so that two-week period, the Candy Gun Club, this is outside of Oregon High School Clay Target League. But what we did at Malala is we required any kid that wanted to participate, we required them to participate in the spring league to understand range safety and to be initiated into the trap shooting protocols because it's not like anything they've done before. They, they may have hunted all their lives, but trap shooting is nothing like hunting, right? And so we required the kids to go through that. The cool thing is Candy, as part of their community outreach, that's free to anybody under the age of 18. The kids get free ammunition, free targets and free training for two weeks. And then if they want to participate in the Gun Club's spring league, the Gun Club will sponsor the youth in the Gun Club again for free. They, the student provides ammo, but the Gun Club will provide targets. So it's that sort of support that really gets the kids off on the right foot, really introduces them to the safety and the importance of safety in this, in this whole operation.
Thank you. So it's kinda hit a couple of key issues or questions you may have. Paid coaches, none that we have found so far from Wilsonville, Candy. So coaches that volunteer. From what I've been able to learn, this is not an OSAA-sanctioned event yet. So not at this time, but in the future, hopefully. We've talked about the virtual competitions. Scores are entered by the coach. I think prior to Saturday evening, there's a deadline each week where your scores have to be entered and that they're all kept online. So you have access to that. There are opportunities both through the Oregon Clay Target League and the Gun Club for coach certification. And students can get certified, their safety certification, either through approved hunter safety course or through the safe training, which is through the website. That's an online train. So there's two ways that students can be certified. So you might ask, what about all the shotguns in the kids' cars at school? You know, like when I used to be in high school. You'd be all kinds of, you'd have your gun racks, they'd be all gunned up. Not allowed. The guns have to go between home and the Gun Club only. No guns, no ammunition on school property ever. And that's grounds to exit. Insurance liability, we've spoken several times with James Dooley of Larson Flynn, who handles our district insurance. And they have assured us that there will be no increase in premiums through Silver Falls District. There are two levels of insurance through the Oregon Clay Target League itself as well as the Gun Club. So you have two different degrees of insurance, all part of the participation fee. Included on the second page are some, some, is some information directly from the Wilsonville A.D. and from Rick's... A.D. and from Rick Stuckey at Oregon School Boards Association, um, about where we sit policy-wise. And according to Rick, it's, it's, it's a slam gun. Policy allows for this, uh, there's no hangups there at all. Another piece of good news, this is cost-neutral to our school district. All, all costs are, are borne by the participants. So, we have no, we have no costs. No costs.
One thing that I think is important to, uh, taking into consideration, um, Silverton High School, um, we have a, a club sport with our OSET group. And it's basically kind of similar in that they take our name and, and, and we oversee some of the requirements for them to participate in terms of grades and that, but it is not an OSAA-sanctioned event. So, um, so this, this would, this would be similar to that.
OSET is our question in team.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Good. Sorry about that.
Kind of the second, the middle, couple of pages in the packet, um, this came from Dale Nelson, our state coordinator of the Clay Target League. And this is kind of a nice handy one sheet. You see a lot of information there, uh, kind of gives a, a, kind of a short down and dirty on things. And on the backside of that is the 2018 schedule. It was pretty good. Finally, the last section in your handout is the document that Canby High School used, uh, kind of their, their program contract, uh, with, with students, uh, that they, they work under. And that would, would be kind of a basis for, for our, we, we use this and, and work from there. But it's, it's pretty good, comprehensive. So, it's our hope, um, if you all don't know what, what your timing is and Andy, you know, whether it's possible, if this would be actionized by the December eleventh, regular meeting? If that, if that is doable, that would give us the maximum amount of time to, to hold really formalized meeting at the high school and, and get this thing going to where we clear that March first deadline by long ways. But this is something that, that you can see just by the number of kids that have, have gone to see James, this is something kids are interested in, families are interested in, and we would like to be a part of this. In the state board, it's just, it's growing like crazy, super safe. What more can you? Jackie, would you like to introduce one of our volunteers?
This is Prefer Go and she's actually in eighth grade right now, so she knows, and she knows we're looking at nine through twelfth grade, but she'd like to participate and she here, and did you wanna say anything as far as, you're interested in participating? Well, I mean, I am interested. Yeah. Well, and, uh, I guess a couple of points that I would make is, there's a lot of kids that don't participate in anything at school because they're not an athlete, they don't have a horse, you know? This would be something that's gonna gather a lot of kids that aren't participating otherwise or minimally participating and give them something to be a part of. It's co-ed, which is kind of unique, um, so I, I think that's a plus in my mind. Um, this is my husband Fred and he is on the OSET board, so we're familiar with how that club, um, atmosphere works with the school. So, I don't know. That's kind of the few things that I wanted to add.
Thanks, Jamie. And to build onto that, there are approximately three hundred colleges and universities in the United States with shooting teams. And most of those offer some form of scholarship, if not full ride. So, that's another opportunity besides, you know, if those kids wanna take it to another level, it's also an Olympic sport.
Yeah, sadly, a student that graduated last year that signed, was our only division on full, full ride last year to go to Ole Miss to not shoot, so.
So, the, the thought that, um, Jackie brought up, that I was wondering, and, and maybe you can informally collect data, like, who, who are those kids that are gonna participate that aren't in anything else?
I would love to.
And what's, what's, what's been the turnout, boys and girls? What's been the percentage?
Uh, so I, five, five girls, yeah.
Okay. What, what do you see turnout at, like, Malala, Wilsonville?
So, Canby had, I think, uh, six or eight girls out of twenty-four, twenty-five, and Malala had five. Hermiston had the fewest number of female participants, but all the other schools, I think, other than the smallest, so within the, the league itself, it's, um, divided into divisions based on the number of participants from each school. In the smallest divisions, we didn't see as many girls, but in the mid to larger division, which is where Malala, Canby, and Hermiston were, we were look, typically looking at about twenty-five, you know, twenty, twenty-five percent.
Okay. Great. And which is great, too. Speaking of the divisions is, you know, we, Silverton connected a, a division or the conference league with Central Oregon, Eastern Oregon schools, based on number of kids, not location. So, because the virtual nature of it doesn't matter.
Yeah. If, if we had twenty-seven participants, we would be in the largest division. We would be competing against Canby, um, Malala, and Hermiston. Hermiston's the number-one school in the state.
It's interesting. Well, it's interesting, about five years ago, I took my daughter, who is now a junior at the high school, and four other kids, so I had three girls and two boys in my group. And there was not a, um, hunter safety course in Marion County, but Canby Rod and Gun Club. And I was thoroughly impressed. I mean, if they're horsing around at the table, you're out of there. When those guys are talking, you listen. It, it is awesome.
So, I have a few questions for you. Some of them were answered, though, when you were giving your presentation. Um, so you're interested in the Canby Rod and Gun Club and possibly not the Four Corners Rod?
Well, we, we've contacted Four Corners. I don't know if they participate.
Oh, I see. So, you're just feeling out.
They're close.
Oh, okay.
On State Street.
Oh, okay.
On the way to Salem.
Four Corners, I don't know that their range is activated anymore. It's been a few years since they've been there, but they had...
I think they're in the process of rebuilding.
Oh, they, they finally get a call.
That's what I heard.
Okay, yeah, like I said, it's been a while, but it, so it may be, it may be coming off.
Okay, okay. Um, the second question I have is, um, the coaches. Um, I, are, they're not, they're certified, they're not certified, they're volunteers?
They're volunteers.
You know, dad's volunteering? Is that, okay, so...
Yeah, that's what it is. And they, they...
Is that...
They would have to pass background checks...
Okay.
For our district, like any volunteer.
Okay.
Uh, and they, they, um, can be certified through, uh, the class...
Okay.
...training, which is online, uh, through the website.
Okay.
And, um, Jamie, the, the range safety officer, um, Chuck was talking to me today on the phone from Canby. He said they, they also provide... Training there, I think, to, to become an RSO.
Yeah, so what's required is, the head coach has to go through the Clay Target League, uh, safety officer training program. It, the head coach is free, they get a complimentary course...
Okay.
Because they're the ones that have to certify the kids through the SAFE program.
Right.
The other coaches, if you're a first-year coach, uh, the school would typically require that a first-year coach also participate in the, the coaches' program. It's fifty dollars to, to complete that education online.
And so, is that, is that out of their pocket?
Yes.
Or is that, okay?
Yeah. So, it Canby, Malala, and Esticated, those are the ones that I'm most, and Hermiston, I know Hermiston really well. Um, all the coaches are volunteer, they all did this out of their own time and pocket.
Okay, okay.
And then, the range safety officer piece, it's not required to be a range safety officer, but it's recommended because when you go to the high school, shoot, each team is required to provide a range safety officer. And so, the range safety officer training is put on, like Kevin said, the Canby Rod and Gun Club does it. It's an NRA, um, eh, education event and it does cost, I don't remember what the cost is, though, but honestly, I'd have to find that out again. But, um, it's a week-long, I think it was a week or two week-long, like two nights a week type thing.
Okay, okay. Um, next question, um, so transportation, uh, that is all a part of the, the parents driving the kids? So, it's on the, okay. Um, and then, uh, the, you, how you said twenty-eight kids are interested?
Right.
Okay.
And I think, I think there, I, I was very clear with them that we're in the initial stages here.
Oh, okay.
That, that we're not, you know, those names don't mean, "Oh, you're gonna be on the team," or...
No, right.
Or anything like that. Just that, um, you know, to come to the board and say that, you know, that you have a pretty good group that, that is excited about it...
Right.
And, and hopes that things go well tonight as well.
I guess my thought was just thinking in the future of, if this, if this po, if this sport is so popular and it's doubling every year in every community, you know, we have to think about that now, um, if, you know, this goes forward. Um, so that's, that's in my thought process, too, of, um, you know, just managing those kids and how many coaches you need and, you know, all of that, so...
And that's what, the, the literature talks about that, of, of, it's, it's very clear, um, the minimum number of kids is five. You have to have at least five to form a team. I don't see a problem with that either. Uh, but then, but there's no maximum, except within the, the limitations of, you know, I think gun club space and...
Oh, sure, okay.
And some of that, the logistical...
Okay.
Things around that.
Right, okay.
You know, would it be feasible to have a hundred and twenty kids?
Right.
In a Silverton team?
Right.
Probably not, you know, at this point, so... But I think we need to start somewhere. So, um, you know, and it's, it's, on that middle section, I, you know, I like the, the no bench warmers, you know, about halfway down on, on this one, you know? So, everybody participates, you know? You don't cut, your varsity and your J's. Everybody's good.
You're in.
Yeah? Yeah.
So, I do have a couple of more questions. Let's see. Okay. Uh, the transporting of shotguns. So, only direct between home and shooting club, never at school, right?
Right.
So, actually, um, the, I think this is a quote from maybe the Dennis Burke, the A.D. at Wilsonville High School?
Yeah, yeah, they're close.
It didn't make a lot of sense to me what he said. Um, this would allow for this district to participate in such a club.
Oh, that's from Rick Stuckey at OSAA.
Oh, okay, okay.
That, that, under legal, yeah.
Yeah, under, okay. Um, "I worked with Wes Lynn, Wilsonville, on updating their policies and this didn't come up in relation to their weapons policy. I would recommend similar rules that student who participates in the club not bring their weapon to school, including not leaving it in their car, so they don't have to go home to get it before a practice or competition and to inform the board." That, that last sentence doesn't make sense. It, it would be leaving it in their car so they don't have to go home.
So, I think what he was saying as a, as an out, "Oh, I don't have to go home to get my gun, so I'm gonna leave it in the car." He's saying that's not, that wouldn't be the case.
Oh, I see. Okay, okay. 'Cause that, I was like, that doesn't make any sense.
Right, 'cause the first time I read that, I thought the exact same thing.
I'm like, that doesn't make sense to me.
You contradicted yourself, yeah. But I think what, what he was saying was, is the student couldn't say, "Well, I don't wanna go home to get my gun, so I brought it to school."
Oh, I see. Okay, so that would be an excuse.
So, you're not giving them the out.
You're not giving them the, "Okay, that's okay. You can have the gun in the car."
Right.
Okay. So, our policy is quite lengthy, um, about, it's three pages long, actually, um, our weapons in schools policy, um, two pages. Um, and it's quite extensive with deadly weapons, you know, things like that. Um, as I read through this policy, um, it does state, um, "Weapons under the control of law enforcement personnel are permitted. The superintendent may authorize other persons to possess weapons for courses, programs, and activities approved by the district and conducted on district property, including, but not limited to hunter safety courses, weapons-related vocational courses, or weapons-related sports." So, I have a concern with, I guess I just need clarification, is there going to be an opportunity where, um, there will be authorization for those students to bring weapons, these particular weapons, on the district campus, um, for any kind of courses or vocational courses of any kind?
So, if I can interject...
Okay.
Before, um, the way I, I take the, the rules and regs for the, the Clay Target League...
Right.
Is they don't allow it.
Okay.
So, if you're gonna take part in the Clay Target League...
Okay.
That, you don't bring your gun or ammo on school grounds.
Okay, okay.
As, as I read on, I think it was their website or the Facebook page or whichever on there, is that if you do, that's grounds for the team being disbanded and you're done.
Yeah. It's not, it's not just... In Canby's as well.
Yeah, so it's, it's not just that kid is out, the whole team could be done.
So, the way I interpret it is, is Clay Target League is not leaving it up to super tenders and school leaders.
Okay, okay.
They're saying, "You don't."
You don't, period.
Period.
Okay.
Now, I could be, I could be misunderstanding that, but that's the way I see it.
Well, I think if that ever changes... If that, if that thought process ever changes, then I would have a concern. You know, if, I mean, I, I would definitely have a concern if students were, and, and this is very hypothetical, of course, um, if they were, you know, if we went in that direction, um, you know, that would be something that I would not support. Um, so if that's the case, then, great, I like that thought process.
I would support it either.
Okay, well...
And I, I don't know, but, yeah, I don't think we're, we're going in that direction. I don't see the, 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 the governing body...
Great.
At Clay Target League.
Okay.
You know, I don't know why they would change their mind on that.
Okay.
So...
Well, you just never know.
You never know.
I just want to bring it up and I need to put it out there.
Yeah.
So, um, okay. So, the other one that I wanted to read in our policy, Andy, "The district may post a notice at any site or premise off district grounds that at any time is being used exclusively for a school program or activity. The notice shall identify the district as the sponsor, the activity as a school function, and that possession of firearms or dangerous weapons in or on the site, on the premises are prohibited under ORS 166.370." Um, can you kind of explain that to me in regards to this?
I believe that pertains to student possession of firearms.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Uh, we, we don't have authority to control, let's say, folks that have concealed weapons permits and things of that sort. Uh, we do with your staff and you do with volunteers and the students. Uh, and so, that posting, you'll see actually that posting, I know there's a sign on the middle school campus, I believe there are signs on the high school campus that, that refer to that, they refer to, uh, automobile, uh, inspections can occur, if anything like that, where firearm possession were to happen on school district property.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
And I think it's fair to say, too, that no, nothing will change in relation to current policy, of course, about practice related to weapons on campus.
Okay.
And we, we take that entirely and very seriously, the students, even if student were involved in, uh, in the Clay Target League and were to bring a, a weapon on campus, uh, that student would be addressed and processed through appropriate policy and behavior discipline. Uh, that's not acceptable.
Okay, great.
And I can also share that all twenty-eight students that have come through my door, that's one of the things that I can, that, that I share, that I can tell you, if this does pass, I have no time to be allowed to bring a shotgun or ammunition to school. So, uh, yeah.
Did you have a question? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. How are you willing to enforce the no pol, the gun at school policy? Like, you may say this, but some people, person might think, "Oh, hey, they aren't gonna probably enforce it, I can probably just sneak it in."
Well, that is my next question.
Are you gonna try, like, do some sort of process where you, I don't know, maybe search or do something to look for some sort of weapon in the vehicle?
I think that's a great question.
It's a really good question, yeah.
Thank you for asking that. I was just about to ask it.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't search, so I'll, I'll start that off, is no, we would not be searching the vehicles, but if we walked by a vehicle and saw a shotgun hanging in the back window, then we'd have a problem. But more likely than not, if somebody did that, we would find out from somebody else. And it's very... And it's very clear what happens, at Canby and other places. That person would be, at the very least, suspended off the team and, and most likely kicked off the team. Period.
If, if I could say, I've shot, I used to shoot competitively and I didn't shoot trap, but I've shot competitively uh, over the years at many different ranges, and I've watched the, the youth teams, um, of all different types, you know, silhouette, pistol, shotgun, so, these kids are very, very well disciplined. Um, you know, we talk about, you know, if they horse around, or, I've never seen that in, you know, like, twenty-plus years of being at ranges, I've never seen kids horse around, I've always seen it be very, you know, family-type, lunch at picnic tables, all that stuff, never seen you screwing around like that. These kids are, are very serious about this sort of thing, they take this, the safety very seriously, as do, you know, the gun clubs, the range officers, all that stuff, you know, it's, it's not willingly, it's not done, you know, halfway or anything, and, you know, I, I think, um, you know, some of people with concerns, visit a gun club, watch how this stuff works, I think that would answer a lot of questions and maybe put some minds at ease.
Yeah.
So I, I, I think it's a great thing.
Appreciate that. Uh, yeah, I would think if, you know, if, if gun clubs are not doing those things, it wouldn't be a gun club for long.
Yeah, that's right. I know in Tri- County, when I was up there, um, I think the most accidents they ever had were all law enforcement, actually, so, um, you know, some guy didn't watch his finger and he just pulled out of the, out of the holster, that type of thing. So, and they were very, very rare at that, so.
Speaking with, with Chuck from the Canby Club, and he's the, the Canby High School coach as well, like, he got, he got to going and ended up going so fast into the details and the technical aspects that I was struggling to keep up with some of the terminology, but it was pretty clear, uh, crystal clear, in fact, how tightly they apply the rules and the guidelines, uh, for when the kids are there. So I, that, that would put your mind at ease as well, so.
I mean, I'll, I'll speak too, just, I'm sorry. But I will speak to, I had a, you know, you have a student has a bad day. Uh, we had a student at the end of season coming to the gun club, he'd had a bad day, um, obviously. He was not being careful with the, and his, he wasn't following procedure, and we, we took him off the line. I mean, you know, we told him, you can't shoot like this, you can either change behavior or you can, or you're gonna have to leave. So there are, there is no gray area in, in this sport, um, and that, that applies to everybody. I don't care if you're ninety-seven, you know, we shoot with guys that are ninety-seven years old, down to eight years old. And the rules are the same for all of them, and if anybody, I, I, we had guys come from two traps down, if they saw a rules violation, they would come down and they would say, you can't do that. If you continue to do that, you need to leave, you need to leave the, the premise. So, you know, to that point, everybody's gonna have, you know, there, there's always an opportunity for failure to follow rules. My experience with the twenty-seven kids we coached at, at Mulholland last year, at the beginning of season, there were some kids that came in, it's like, oh, this is gonna be fun, this is gonna be great. After two weeks, they're like, uh-oh, you guys are serious. I can't just go up whenever I want, I can't hold the gun however I want, I can't move without somebody telling me how to move, right? So, this isn't, you know, the same thing with guns in cars, there was no, and, and what you found was the students were holding each other accountable. So they, the students know, oh, Joe, he's the most likely to, to try and shortcut it. Well, I guarantee you that, you know, Bob, whoever, was watching Joe and saying, dude, you, you bring that to school, you're taking my, my recreation away. And so we saw more accountability from the seniors and the juniors on the team, holding the other students accountable than, than what we as coaches had, so.
Thank you, because that was part of my question. Um, emotional regulation for this age group can be difficult, we all know that. So that was part of my question, and I wondered if, if this comes to pass, can we, um, come up with a, a little bit more of an extensive student contract for students? And some measure of some methods of accountability for rules, behavior. Also, I wanted to ask a question about the, the price, the cost. Um, I know some sports are expensive, and this is an expensive proposition. Um, what happens for the kids who try it for two weeks and then decide it's not for them? Or what, what I'm really thinking is what happens for the kids who really wanna do it, but their families cannot afford that? And does that mean that fundraisers, scholarshiping is gonna be offered, and who's gonna offer that?
There could certainly be fundraisers, I don't know where a scholarship, you know, that, that could fund, a scholarship fund could be fundraisers.
Yeah.
And my thinking, and James can add this to anybody else, that maybe it would be the folks participating, it would be the fundraisers.
You could speak to the OSET side of that a little bit.
Thank you.
Correct, for OSET, lots of fundraisers or we pay for the fees, I mean, when we kinda know going into it, it's gonna cost this much and probably some more. Um, part of that whole piece fundraising, I would anticipate that we would do some. Um, the sooner we can get approval, the sooner we can start putting that kinda stuff together and get that going too for this year, so.
And it's really parents-driven?
It, it is, absolutely.
No outside agencies?
Uh, well, I mean, if an outside agency wanted to make a donation, they're welcome to do that.
Yeah, the cost to, to participate in a league is thirty-five dollars, from the student perspective. Targets and ammunition, there's nine weeks, two rounds per week, so total required expenditure, you're looking at about two hundred and fifty dollars, um, for, for one season. There's optional, um, optional options, like, I wanna practice more, that's gonna increase your cost. Uh, Mulholland required a team to have a uniform, and so students had to buy a vest and a hat to be united as a team, um, that was eighty dollars. Uh, so, now, I put together the budget based on my experience with last year. But what I do know is Canby Gun Club gave us fifty percent off of targets while we were in competition. So the target cost is much lower than what I have. Uh, Canby also sold ammunition to the families that were participating in the high school Clay Target League at their cost, so that saved thirty percent on ammunition cost. So, and then on top of that, you know, families, I mean, we had families donating money. Mulholland Clays ended up forming a five oh one C three, uh, just so we could raise money um, to support more families getting involved. But, you know, total cost, if you did everything, you're looking at an additional two hundred and ninety dollars, so five hundred and forty dollars total would be, would be, if you did extra practice, if the school required uniforms, if, um, um, you know, all of that. If, how, how's that compared to OSET, what's your annual cost for OSET?
I don't know. It's a little more, more meeting.
Right, of course, that's true.
Of course, it's eat every day, but, but probably in excess of a thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's, it might double that.
Right.
So this is, the way this is, is what I'm looking at, is it's not much different than some of the sports that have to be fundraised at the high school. You know, dance team has to ra- fundraise, you know, there's several other, you know, swim team has to fundra- I mean, there's a lot of, of sports and activities that have to fundraise.
Most, most sports do.
Yeah, right.
For things above and beyond.
Okay, yeah.
In this situation, compared to say, a basketball team where the school pays for coaches, refs, uniforms, the school would not be paid for those things.
Right, okay, okay.
Is the, and is the cost, the cost for ammo and targets, I, that's probably, you don't pay that upfront, do you? Is that, is that spread out through the, through the season?
It depends.
Or how does that work?
Um, with, last year with Canby Rod and Gun Club, uh, we did prepay targets, that's how we got a fifty percent discount on target costs. Um, we, we knew how many targets each student would, would, uh, use for the season, and so they invoiced us at the beginning of the actual season, and we had students pay that at the beginning to get the discount.
Okay.
And then ammunition, same thing, we know how much ammo would be required, and the gun clubs, uh, offered to sell ammunition to the families at their cost, and again, that was one order, they didn't come in and buy it over week to week, they would, they bought that, okay, this is what you're gonna need for the season.
Kevin, James, one other question, just to clarify too, is, so prior to the student athlete joining the team, you will fully vet the emotional stability, and then once they're on the team, you have ways of just analysis and making sure that, by a weekly basis, that there's no issues that could incur in order to have anything, you know, probable issues?
Yeah, 'cause we see it at school every day.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, the same, the same way.
Teachers see it every day, and, and if, if a kid's in crisis, yeah, we get, somebody's gonna know that, so.
I, I think the safety record speaks for itself too, I think that shows that, you know, safety of the emotions and, and actions that the students are taking very seriously, so.
I don't think the thought of closing the idea, um, in the future of revisiting the thought of, um, a little more extensive, uh, emotional, uh, well-being regulation if it needs to be implemented. Um, I, I, I'm not gonna shut it all the way down and just say, you guys, go ahead and do it. I think that the conversations should stay open and should have an opportunity to be revisited if needed.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with that, it is.
So that's, that's all, I'm, I'm not, yeah, that's
Yeah, and I, I mean, I get the fact
I don't think it's unreasonable.
It's because there's guns involved.
Right, right.
But that would be the only activity in sport.
Right.
When you go and look at
Yeah, exactly, which I think is
Your kids, where a kid's head is, in a certain way.
Sure, which I think is reasonable.
Which is kind of a hard thing to do.
Yeah.
To be honest.
Well
If, if they're not exhibiting outward.
Right, yeah, I think that's
It's, it's hard to know.
It, it is, yeah, it is. But also, the, the, um, the people who are in charge of these students that we're representing here, um, are not counselors or psychologists of any kind. So I think that having that cushion of some kind of, you know, emotional regulation, whatever that means, I don't even know what that means in definition right now to you, but I don't wanna shut the idea down. Um, I want, if it needs to be revisited in the future, because you might be seeing something or there might be something happening, I think that could be talked about. Um, I don't think that's unreasonable, yeah.
I'd like to speak to that briefly.
Sure, sure.
I've been coaching high school and middle school sports since nineteen ninety-two.
Mm-hmm.
So I've got a long track record with that, us coaches know when our kids need to be sent home.
Okay.
That's part of being a coach, as far as I'm concerned, I'm sure James and Kevin have both had coaching experiences as well, but I, I've done that, you don't, you don't even be here today. Andrew, you just go home, we can talk tomorrow.
Okay. I just, I, and I thank you for that input, I just don't want to shut down the idea. Just because this is a brand-new thought for our district, it's a brand-new sport that includes something that, you know, could be, you know, highly, I don't know, I mean, this is something new, so I'm just throwing it out there, um, just, that's all. Not shutting it down, I'm just, I just wanna keep the conversation open, so, okay, great, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, I just wanted to say something that I've observed since Cameron has started shooting, you know, and to also tag on to what you said, is this isn't just a sport that they start in high school and ends in high school, it's a lifelong sport, and it also is such a family sport and a community sport, and there is that, you know, like Jamie had said, that accountability, not just with the peers, but with other families. And it's that thing that we all had growing up, where if someone else's mom saw you do something, they were gonna say something to you, it's that same sort of thing. And the als- also, the other great part that I've noticed for Cameron is that it has diversified his community. You know, he's not just friends with high school kids, he has, you know, other adults that, quite frankly, can get him out of some of those thongs that I can't, when he's having a bad shooting day. You know, so it's just a, you know, I, I get what you're saying about the emotional stability of, of teenagers, but I think that the environment that they're in and the participation that they have just lends itself to, you know, help them better process those things.
And I thank you for sharing that, because I think that's important to know, that perspective. Um, from my point of view, as a school board member, I have to look at this as a liability standpoint. And I have to look at it as, um, you know, doing everything we can, um, to protect our students and our district from anything happening. So while there's an emotional side to it of families, you know, you get to know families, you get to get, you know, you get together, you know the kids, you are diversified, that's, that's actually what I want. I think that's a terrific idea. Um, but I have to look at the other side too and say, you know, this is a public institution, and we have to have some kind of secure, um, documentation um, to protect the students that are participating in it, um, and also to protect our district. So I'm not familiar with this, although my husband and my son are, I just wanna make that clear. Um, and I consulted my husband quite a bit on this tonight. Um, but from my standpoint, I guess that's where I'm coming from as well, so both sides, um, just to, you know, I think, so
Totally get that.
Yeah, great, okay, thank you for, thank you for that, yeah, thank you. Thank you.
One more question.
Um, I don't, I highly doubt this will happen, but what are the procedures if a student does go on a rampage with the weapon? That, I'm, I'm not saying this would happen, but what would you, what procedures would you take if this possibly happened?
That sounds like a superintendent question.
That would be a very unfortunate situation, especially at, at any school. Uh, but we have a variety of procedures and practices in place, everything up to and including uh, activity of administration and teachers, law enforcement would like to be involved with something like that. Variety of safety protocols would be put in place immediately, so that's quite a, quite a large question, it'd be a pretty extensive answer, but I can assure you that if anything like that were to occur, it would be addressed immediately.
Easier way to do it was probably kick them off the team, maybe.
I think that would be
So, Cameron, could we be on the spot for you? What's, what's, what's the best part of this?
Um, I think the community, like, it really brings everyone together, like, there was a wide variety of people from the Mulholland High School team that I saw, and it was interesting being an outsider in a group and being like, pulled into the community, and just how well, like, how smooth of a transition that was, like, there were obviously people on, in one group that didn't talk to everybody else, that, you know, they really came together and they really, so it, the team provided a really good standpoint and a really good basis for new friendships.
Cameron, you, you, you don't play any other sports?
No, shooting's all, it takes up all my time.
Takes up a whole lot of time. He's part of our ASV group too, so.
Alright, well, that was a good discussion, um, if we can have, is there any reason we can't get on, make an action for December's meeting?
If, if the board would like to see that, I don't, we can surely move ahead. I, I did hear one, one question that wasn't answered this evening, Jennifer, I think it was yours, it was about, uh, the number of students, what other activities they may be involved in.
I'm just curious, I mean, I, I just want, it, it, that's the kinda thing I think that we, as a board, wanna promote, as a school system, wanna promote, uh, kids being connected, and I just think it would be interesting, that's what I was thinking before Jackie said that, like, there are gonna be students who participate in this that may not participate in anything else, and I just, I would hear, I would listen to any, uh, you know, anecdotes about that. Yeah, yeah.
Maybe out of the twenty-eight names that you have, you could probably take a look at the names, James, and see if they're involved in other activities, right? That'd be great.
Yeah, and I, I don't, I don't mean that to vote, I just, I
Sure.
Just curious.
Yeah, I thought you guys had a, a, a great presentation, all, any, all possible questions were answered. I mean, the work done by Wilsonville and Canby, Mulholland have been, you know- I mean, the work done by Wilsonville and Canby, Mulalla have been, you know, paved the way. So, but it's, you know, if more questions pop up between now and the next meeting, we can postpone it or not. Actually, I say put it on, I'd like to get on agenda.
I've heard great things from the community, I haven't heard anything against it, so.
I think it's a great idea. I'm very impressed with the safety measures that the gun clubs and the league itself has put into place. And I have full confidence in the staff at the school, at the high school too. You guys will keep this in check, so I say no for it.
I also wanted to mention that, thank you for providing the Canby High School information, you know, that they established. Theirs is, and this is one thing I did forget, theirs is a probationary club status and conditions. Is there, that's just what they wanted to do for their school? Just a probationary, to see how it goes? Okay, and we aren't, you aren't looking for that. You're looking to want to implement it, get registration, go in, and go for it?
We are, but I think by nature would be, you know, that first year would be your pilot year.
Right, right.
Probationary pilot.
Yeah.
Tryout. Because if it didn't work, well, what? You good? We'll get on to December agenda.
Sounds good. Jackie, Cameron, Carla, Jamie, thank you guys. Appreciate you guys contributing. Okay, well, very good. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you for coming, thank you for coming.
Two questions. We'll see you after the meeting. All right, very good. Does anybody else have, anybody else have anything for the business? All right, see you then, meeting adjourned. Thanks for coming.